You are ready. I am recording now.
Okay, were we seven o'clock yet? We're closed. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Yeah.
On the CDBG application, I would like to have a motion on the record that we are authorized to apply for that. I didn't know if Councilor Topaz had any final comments or questions.
No comments or questions. I'll second it if you forested it.
Well.
When do we get there?
Yeah.
We gotta get her meeting, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I think the resolution probably captures that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rachel. Okay, we'll call this regular session to order. I'm going to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Matt. Okay, we'll open it up for visitor comments.
If you do have a visitor comment, please mark, raise your hand through Zoom, or you can wave at the screen. Mayor, I do not see anybody wishing to make a public comment.
Okay, so seeing none, the next order of our business is to announce the award winners to, if I were mayor, student contestant winners. So, I have to get it up here on my phone here, because the results were texted to me. And the fourth and fifth grade poster winner is Olivia Fantas. The runners-up were Geneva Anderson and Sarah Jess. And I look forward to having lunch with you at some point in time. If that's still gonna happen, I think it could. So, on the essays, sixth and eighth grade winner is Lucy. The other contestants were Kathleen Leonard and River Bennett. And I gotta tell you, they were all very, very good, and it was a very tough choice for this council to decide on a winner. So, congratulations to our winners and our runners-up. I would like to invite all of you, if we can, have lunch. If it's doable, I'd like to invite all of you to lunch with me. So, but the winners of the hundred dollars again are, the poster was Olivia Fantas, and the essay was Lucy. Did she say that right, Colbot? I think so. I think so. So, congratulations to you. You're all here. I think I see pretty much most of you. So, congratulations, and thank you for your participation.
I just appreciate all the heart and all the caring that they put into them.
Council, would you like to make any comments?
Yeah, I just, each one of them put so much kindness and so much caring into their project. You could tell that they cared about their community a lot. And just, it was very personal for each one of them. When I read it and looked at their posters and looked at their words, I could tell from their project that they love their town a lot. And I really appreciate all that effort, because that's the most important part of being the mayor is to be, have a big heart and to care a lot.
Well, I could certainly see that as well. Throughout all entries, it was impressive to me to see the wide range and the different directions that everyone took. Very nice, intriguing. As a teacher, I was so impressed. Congratulations.
Okay, all right, so.
Do they still look fun when their party is?
We will, we are gonna determine that date. Lucy, we do it in July sometime, but we'll have to see. I think it will still happen in July. Lisa, do we have all their contact information?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so we'll be notifying you, and I hope to see you soon. This COVID stuff has been a challenge for all of us, including you. And we are working hard to try to understand it and adapt to the world we're living in. So, we're doing our part, and we're gonna do it to the best of our ability, and I hope to see you guys soon, okay? All right. So, we're gonna get on to our next order of business. That's what we do. We do ordinances and resolutions, and we pass policy, and then we pass it.
Argue.
These staff members, they, they put it in play. Okay, ordinance, final reading, ordinance number 3253, and ordinance amending the St. Helens Municipal Code chapters seventeen point four six and seventeen point one two four regarding floodplains and floodways and accessory structures.
I move we adopt ordinance number thirty-two fifty-three as read.
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to approve ordinance thirty-two fifty-three. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Okay, resolution number eighteen eighty-two, a resolution adopting the cybersecurity policy.
We adopt resolution number eighteen eighty-two.
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to approve resolution eighteen eighty-two. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, resolution eighteen eighty-three, a resolution of common council of the city of St. Helens, Oregon, amending the city employee compensation plan for temporary water filtration facility supervisor.
I move we adopt resolution number eighteen eighty-three as read.
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to approve resolution eighteen eighty-three. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, resolution eighteen eighty-four, a resolution to authorize application for community development block grant funds for COVID-19 emergency assistance.
Move we approve resolution eighteen eighty-four as read.
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to approve resolution eighteen eighty-four. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, award bid contract, a twenty-twenty annual street striping project in apply A-line ink in the amount of eighteen thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars.
Move we award bid contract to apply A-line ink as read.
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to award bid contract to A-line ink. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, approve and authorize for signature, a agreement with Oregon State Marine Board for maintenance assistance program, fiscal year twenty-one.
Move we approve and authorize for signature, Oregon State Marine Board as read.
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to approve agreement with Oregon State Marine Board. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, appointments to city boards and commissions. What do we have, Kathy?
I have one.
Okay.
Planning Commission interviewed and moved to recommend appointment of Jennifer Pugsley to the Planning Commission.
Nice.
Got a motion?
You have.
Moved.
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to appoint Jennifer Pugsley to the Planning Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any others?
We have two people to reappoint to the library board. Berkeley and Gail Moron Maggi. I believe that's the correct pronunciation.
Okay, could you repeat that? I tried to repeat it.
Melissa Gail Moron Maggi is the last one.
Okay.
Melissa Gail Rune Maggi.
M-A-G-G-I is the last part. The next, her name before the hyphen is G-A-E-L-R-U-N.
Okay.
M-A-G-G-I.
Okay, I'm gonna ask, no offense, but I'm gonna ask Margaret to say it one more time so I can repeat it.
Melissa.
Yes.
Gail Rune Maggi.
Okay, okay, I have a motion made.
Actually, the motion really wasn't made right.
Yeah, it wasn't. You're right.
Steve, is that a motion made?
Yes.
Okay, you needed to raise it in the, in the term of a motion, yeah.
No.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to appoint Gil. Ma, ma, say that again, Margaret. I forgot it.
Well, we don't wanna forget Patrick. Patrick Berkeley.
I got him.
And Melissa Gail Rune Maggi.
Okay, to appoint Melissa Gail Rune Maggi and Patrick Berkeley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Consent agenda for acceptance, a Parks and Trails Commission minutes dated February tenth, twenty. Planning Commission minutes dated March tenth, twenty.
Move we, move we approve consent agenda for acceptance, items A and B as read.
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to approve consent agenda ten, A and B as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consent agenda for approval, new police corporal job description, or A, new police corporal job description, and B, account payable bill list.
Move we approve consent agenda for approval, items A and B.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve consent agenda eleven, A and B as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, let's see, what do I have to report? I see some businesses reopening, doing it right. I know a lot of people are being cautious in our community. I'm very encouraged by the response that they're, they're taking as far as this phase one opening and adhering to the rules as set by the health district, the CDC is the main one that really is providing the, I don't know, I guess the guidelines of what you need to do and what not to do. And so, I'm encouraged by that, and it's been a long, seems like a long time. It seems like it has been a long time, and it has. It's been almost two months, a little over two months, it seems like. Continue to learn more about COVID, and it's, it's just a very complex issue. It was a hot topic on our earlier work session, and I will state this, that we need to make sure, and we take our three o'clock break because we all agreed to that. So, we are going to continue to make sure that gets put on the agenda. Lisa, if we can, just put it on the sheet, that blank sheet, big black bold print, that three o'clock is a ten-minute break, just because that's the way we work. But we, we work well, genuinely, and it was still good. But, and we'll get back into reading our, our rules, that hold us accountable. So, we're kinda displaced a little bit, too, you know? We've been affected through this as well. And the staff is doing a fabulous job of keeping our city going, serving our citizens, applaud you guys, each and every one of you. You know, you're, you're all in the position to lead a certain part of our city, whether it be library to, to public works, to police, you're, you're doing a good job. And of course, the administrator, it's a reflection of that leadership, John, so.
Thank you.
Discussion on the waterfront today. We're not gonna use COVID as a response to, well, we're gonna do all these great things for our city, and then COVID happened. That's, that cannot be an excuse. The world is getting, it's still turning. World is still turning. So, we're not gonna use it as an excuse, but we're definitely gonna learn from it. And we're going to build a stronger community because of it, is the way I feel. That's what I'm optimistic of, is we'll build a stronger community because of this. We are a small community, and we can do it right. We have, we have been doing it right. We have been doing it right, and we can continue to do it right. And that's being respectful to one another. So, if I was a little disrespectful earlier to councilors, I apologize for my behavior. And, you know, we're all in this together. That's for sure. Doesn't matter what side you're on, if you have a side, we're all in this together. That's never gonna change. So, that's my report. So, with that, I will start with Council President Morton.
Thank you.
Yes.
I agree, Mayor, and I agree wholeheartedly that we stick with discussions and, and to the topic, and try to find resolution to the issues that are in hand. In that way, you know, we don't get into the arguments, we don't get into pointing fingers, and, and we do function as a team. So, I appreciate what you said, and I wholeheartedly believe in that as team, as teamwork on this council, and with the staff as well, collaborating with the staff. I'd like to show some appreciation to the staff and the council for the good, actually the staff for the good work of allowing the Parks Commission to go ahead with their Zoom meeting. It was very productive, and I, they're very appreciative. So, a big thank you to the staff and the council as well. I'm very extremely encouraged about the huge, huge, small business economic boost we heard about today. I can't think of any, I'm elated. I can't think of anything better in terms of the news that we get, that our small businesses are going to have a boost by two people, Mark Ellsworth, who's the Columbia County Small Business Developer for the Port, and Columbia County Economic Interim Director, Paul Vogel. What great news that was today. And it's gonna give everyone in our, on our main street and throughout our city, a huge boost that we have these two individuals now in, in our, in, in our neck of the woods working for us. And I hope, and I, I hope that it's productive, as they say it will be. And that's, that's, that's just all I have, is I felt really good about their reports. That made my day. It was, it was super. So, I hope the rest of council feels the same way. That's it.
Yep. I do. I feel good about it. Counselor Carlson.
Oh, out of order. When we're not.
There's no order. There's no.
Not sitting in a row. I don't know what to go next. I had a couple of things, also very encouraged about the small business and the outreach and the partnership. I think to some extent, the Zoom is fostering that. It's easier to add people, and people are able to touch base on meetings that they may have missed because they couldn't get there. So, I think that's making it easier for people to be part of the team. I just noticed people participating in chamber events that hadn't before. They think that sometimes this could be a blessing in disguise, because like, like the mayor said, we'll be stronger for this challenge, and we'll have new partnerships and new, new achievements. The youth council had planned on doing the waterfront flowers in April because of COVID that was delayed. And so, we are doing that next Sunday, but it's going Sunday. I wanted to say thank you to Means Nursery and Scappus Watershed Council that have both put forth donations of plants to help the kids out. And the kids are very excited about that project, about beautifying their waterfront, but mostly about being outside. These kids have been out of school and have been isolated for so long, so they're very encouraged by that. I think we had a lot of good discussions today about letting our community get outside and taking a leadership role for groups and our community, and just reaffirming to them that they're not alone and that we're all in this together. And I just appreciate all that effort, and I appreciate the passion of this council, that they're not afraid to stand up when things matter. And just thanks, just great to be part of such a good, strong team. That's all I have.
Rick, I've gotta go back. When can I do it? Now or later?
Well, let's wait till we get to Counselor Topaz and then Locke, and then I'll come to you.
Thank you.
Yep.
On the Fourth of July, there's a citizens group that rings bells. They're gonna ring the bells at two o'clock on the Fourth of July.
Great.
And there's a number of people there. Question for our Parks group, we were going to look into the permits for getting a dock for kayaking or loading kayaks at Gray Cliffs. Is that proceeded at all?
Has, has it proceeded with staff? No. Is it on a, is it in the master plan? A portion of it is yes. And so, yes, we can go forward with that, with that project. But, you know, they, I, they, the Parks Commission has not advised the council to move forward on that. As soon as they do that, I'll bring that up in their next meeting, and if we can get that to go forward on that, I'm sure that we will.
Pardon me?
I, can I just make a quick comment on that?
Yes, you may, Sue.
So, yes, that is something, Counselor Morton is, is absolutely correct. We do wanna talk to the Parks and Trails Commission about that, but it's also something that we would anticipate being able to find some grant funding for. So, that's something that Jenny Dimshaw will be looking for, and John may wanna chime in, but we think that this would be a perfect project for some marine board grant funding. So, when that comes around for an opportunity for us to apply, that has an excellent, excellent chance to be awarded for that. Since we don't have a lot of other funding for those types of projects right now, and that, that was a fairly hefty price tag for, for that particular project. But, something that I think would be a great benefit to that park.
Counselor Topaz, I'm so impressed that you're on board with that and, and asking pertinent questions. Thank you.
Well, I've got kayakers around here who have a hard time getting through the mud, and they'd like to have the Gray Cliffs condition improved. I stayed on the Portland Harbor. It was a presentation by DEQ on the wanted project. Now, this is a piece of ground, just this side of the railroad bridge between the cliffs and the river. What's different about this is that it's only above the river level to the cliffs. DEQ doesn't handle in water. And their two big problems is they've got a very high level of toxic waste that has to be removed, and they've got twenty-eight thousand cubic yards of low toxic waste which are gonna pile up someplace on the facility. Their description, they did not realize that the Army Corps would give them fill, to take care of the stuff that they move or that they could barge it. So, they were totally landbound by transportation and moving, and they're looking at how to handle that. But, their process is getting to move their toxic stuff and leave it in place if it's mild and covered over, and keep people away from it. Very toxic stuff is removed. Now, the next thing on my agenda, I just found out there's an industrial metal salvage operation that's being built in the old battery plant behind the police station, I should say, the sheriff's department. That's quite a operation. They will be bringing what I call crap salvage in. When they chop up cars, the heavy stuff is easily removed by magnets and other techniques. The real junk, which is about twenty-five percent by volume, is high-grade metals, and the rest is junk or real crap. That will be brought here to St. Helens, and they've got a really neat operation. First, they go through a sizing, and then they pick out where the aluminum, where the stainless steel, where the copper is. And the computer remembers this, and as it goes down the line, they have automatic equipment that picks that stuff off. And it then is shipped out as copper, stainless steel, aluminum, and a pile of crap. They'll be bringing about six to ten truckloads of crap in every day, and they're collecting from all the yards in the area around Portland and all that. So, that's quite a piece of equipment coming.
Where does the waste go, Steve?
I don't know. They did not tell me. But it, it has to go to a landfill. Right now, the crap goes to a landfill, even though a great deal of the weight of landfill is this valuable metal, where the biggest volume is just crap, basically toxic pieces of car. And that's get shipped out someplace. We didn't discuss where that went. But that's almost in final condition to be turned on. So, there'll be, the strange thing is they're allowed to have twelve people work there. I don't know how the twelve workers was assigned. Was that from the building department or zone for their business license?
That's port property, isn't it?
I don't know. I just walked in and asked them, so.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's a port project.
Okay. Well, I was, you know, somewhat upset that it wasn't announced when the project was gonna start here, as compared to being ninth and done. Then, there was an announcement that we have an election for city council members, and it says we have two incumbents. And the date to start signing up is yet to come. And how we can have incumbents in our proclamation that we're gonna have an election was, I think, I'd like to know, can we use that word, you know, proclamation legally? I mean, it says that you're running, Jenny, and have you signed up? And I don't think you can sign up yet.
No, I think it is listed that way because I am seated. I'm not, the position is not vacant.
Oh, okay.
Not on, I'm still there.
I know that.
Not open today.
Yeah, and I was, I was just wondering, because the way it was worded was how.
Yeah, I trust Kathy, I trust Kathy that has that format, and it's not her first rodeo.
I know. It just seemed to be off, you know, like, this is the position that's now held. Anyway, it was worrying there. Another thing that I found very upsetting is I read the build operation for the waterfront. And a couple of things struck my eye that was upsetting. One, it says we're, at least the document says we're in negotiations for the hotel right now. And I thought we were put a, we, the council, put an RFP out for things. I did not know that was a done deal, and we were discussing that with a particular person. They talk about the connector plant, and yet, in this thing, there's nothing happening beyond the end of the veneer site. So, that road going up by this sewer plant is still a small road. The other big point is, this is gonna be a great bicycling place. Well, if you bicycle, St. Helens in a hole. Coming down that back road, Plymouth is, is dangerous right now for anybody but a real bicycle. Going out, Old Portland Road is a tough job. Going up Columbia Boulevard, either all the way up out to the highway, or Seventh, or Fifth Street, that's a whole hard road. And if you go to, say, Sobeys Island, where everything's flat, making such a big condition out of bicycling is a little bit difficult here. The other thing that got me, there's a. difficult here. The other thing that got me, there's a fair number of references to the uh framework plan. And I looked up the framework plan and it says council members are part of the process. And I, in this plan, I wasn't even informed. I know I asked for copies when it was in draft form, as we're not given it. But the way I read it was the framework plan and the people involved, the council should have been involved in this and they weren't. Some other references about public meetings for the framework plan, how the community was involved. And there's a picture actually of me in the front row. And these were reports to the community, the community was not allowed to be involved. So I was a little bit upset. And because of that saying that we're in negotiations with a hotel I would either correct that or pull the grant because that's not true now as far as I know. And if it is, uh, we're not telling everybody the truth. That's all I've got to say.
Okay, Counselor Locke.
Uh, I just want to thank our, our Police Chief Brian and and Joe, our Lieutenant, for coming up with this Police Corporal. Yeah, it isn't only gonna make us a better police force and a safer police force and save us money, but it's, it's gonna help us retain all these young guys that we have on the staff right now. Because now, now there's another position that gives them a raise and and, you know, some outlook that they can move up instead of just a few. So uh we're gonna see a lot of great things happen because of that position opening up. Thank, thank you guys for putting that together.
All right. Thank you, Keith. Okay, Department Report, Chief. Oh yeah, Doug, I forgot, you go back, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thanks Jenny. And this, Jenny, I was, wanted to piggyback on what you said about Zoom. And I've got, I've got the same kind of responses in the community of how kind of cool it is is that, you know, they, one, they can hear us. You know, unlike Comcast, they can hear what we're saying. They can, they can see us as, or and so I started to think, couldn't there be a combination? And I was gonna ask Matt this, and if we could, uh, in our council chambers, have our regular session meeting you know, on Comcast, whatever, but could we do Zoom at the same time? Is it possible to do the two at the same time to get uh to get better community outreach, better communication to all our people? Uh, it just makes sense. So anyone can do Zoom from anywhere. You don't have to be in the city, in the Comcast range or whatever. You can be anywhere you want and tune into Zoom and get our council meeting as well as people who rely on the Comcast broadcast. But this is so much, this is what I keep hearing, and I'm glad you brought it up, Jenny, that this is such a, a more thorough uh medium to reach people. And so I just think it'd be kind of neat to do the combination of a Zoom and a Comcast. You give it a try anyway, see where it goes. Anyway, just an idea right now.
I get one more go back too, because he went off me, I get to go off him now. But he looked and during the gap, but there were thirty comments on our Facebook livestream. That's more people than have probably watched us on Comcast in the last year.
And or attend our, our council meetings as well.
I mean, thirty people, not just thirty people watched, thirty people liked it or made a comment that said, wow, we actually get to see the people we voted for.
So I like that.
I got messages and people watched.
I like that.
I was gonna comment on that also. I've gotten a couple of messages from people, picked it up on Facebook.
Sorry.
Okay, so now we're gonna go with Department Reports. We're gonna start with Chief Greenway.
I have nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor. Just a huge thank you to all the, you know, the leaders of the city. Yeah, yourself, the counselors, for all your continued support. So, thank you.
Yep, good work. Sue Nelson.
Um, uh, other than happy National Public Works Week again. And um I just really want to acknowledge our staff. I think they've done a great job, especially making adjustments during these last couple of months to their schedule and their work duties. And also apologize for not being able to join for the earlier public hearing. I was having some internet issues here and wasn't able to get on after multiple, multiple attempts. So I, I hope I didn't miss anything too exciting.
Sounds like you need a great new fiber network set up by the city.
Oh, well, if you can get that out here in Deer Island, that would be fabulous.
Okay.
Yeah, and have a happy Memorial Day, everybody.
Yeah, you too. Margaret Jeffries.
Hi. I just want to thank Anne, Amanda Heineman for her library board report today. I thought she did a fine job. Our library board had their first Zoom meeting last week and it was, came together nicely. And everybody was um pretty tech savvy, so I was pleased with how that went. I will uh offer an opinion, it's not a very positive one, but maybe when people aren't confined at home, our meetings won't be nearly as interesting.
That's funny, Margaret. That's, that's so true, probably, though. You're right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't mean to, you know, burst your bubble or anything, but I mean, maybe people are tired of looking at Netflix and we look pretty good now.
All right, Margaret, thank you. So now we're on to Matt.
Um, I don't have anything other than I was just gonna piggyback from what all you, all the counselors have said about our interaction today on Facebook and seeing the people that we reached from the earlier video uh for the work session. Facebook stats show that we reached almost seventeen hundred people uh with almost five hundred engagements. So that's way more than obviously we've ever seen with any other platform.
Seventeen hundred with five hundred engagement.
Yeah, you'll have to talk with Crystal about how the Facebook stats, you know, really work, really.
Hey, Margaret Jeffries, we made the big time.
All, all I know is it's a lot better than ever had as far as a public engagement and people being involved and watching the meeting. So um and even tonight's meeting um is already up to sixteen comments and nine hundred and fifty-one people reached. So um people are at home from work now and cruising Facebook and seeing that we're live and tuning in. So I know those Kathy and Lisa and myself and Darren are working on a new platform MuniCode that we're getting away from Granicus. So we do have some edits that are gonna be needed in the council chambers when we make that transition. And we will definitely look at seeing what we can do with Zoom or the MuniCode system um to see how we can continue this involvement.
Or just a Facebook stream because it's much more user friendly.
Yeah, question for Lisa. Those comments back on Facebook, are they part of public record then? Since we go out on public record on Facebook, do they come back as comments that are in public record?
No, they're live streamed.
No, they, they are during the live stream, they are not entered into the public record unless they're actually sent in or said during the meeting. Um, and we don't read the public comments during the meeting. So they are not considered part of the public record.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
Yep.
Uh Kathy?
Kathy is not here tonight.
Lisa? Lisa, anything?
Sure, I'll just say congratulations to the If I Were Mayor contestants. All of them did a great job. It's a lot of work. And especially with, with what's happening with school right now, they really went above and beyond to do some extra work for us. And I'll be sending the two winners to the state and hopefully we'll find out in the next couple of months if we have some winners from the state, because we definitely have some really good entries that were done. That's all I got.
Yes, that is so true. Look forward to seeing how they compete and stay. Okay, I'm off.
All right, just building on the, the workshop there earlier, we had a report from interim director Paul Vogel at CCT. And he casually mentioned, don't waste a good crisis as a, as an opportunity there. And I really prescribed by that. There's a, you know, it's, you know, as hard as this is, it's been an opportunity to kind of band together, try new things, you know, find solutions, new ways of doing business. And you know, and what comes out the other side is a stronger community. It's really a community building effort. I think that's a important takeaway, as rough as this might be, it'll, we'll be better and stronger in the end. Then secondly, I wanted to address Counselor Topaz's assertions about the bill grant application and the, the negotiations with the builder and the application, you know. It's, while it's true, we are not currently under negotiations, we were and we continue to talk. And it's, we're not under a formal agreement, but we're still, we're still talking. So it's not, not as, as formalized as it might otherwise be. But I'm pretty confident we're not misrepresenting ourselves.
Is, um, I, just a follow-up question. Isn't usually a grant, um, like, almost like a conceptual plan?
Everything's very.
And build documents to a grant, because stuff can happen during discovery, after a grant is funded, that we don't know about. Because it could be funded and it could be a year from now before we build it and a place could go out of business. That doesn't mean the grant project goes away. It means that we have to come up with Plan B.
Oh, for sure. Yeah, and then the other.
It's like, just because it's in the grant proposal doesn't mean it's, it's like set in stone.
Your concept.
Concepts were done a year and two and three years ago. And it's like, you know, you pull it out, you're like, oh yeah, it was at that meeting. Oh yeah, that, we did have public hearings. But it was a long time ago and we have done a lot of planning. It doesn't mean that there was a separate secret meeting. It just means that sometimes they all blend together.
The question I have is some grants, they are set in stone. And I don't know how the funder takes what we say and how hard it is. The number of grants I've had are almost like hard contracts. Some freedom, but not much. It very much depends on the framework of the granting agency. Way to mine.
That could be, could very well be. There's a fair amount of flexibility and we're, I don't think we're disrepresenting the project or the amount of, level of effort or work that's gone into it. And you know, the framework plan was adopted in two thousand and sixteen. So it's been, as hard as that is to believe, it's uh four years ago now. So nearly, so. Time passes, people change, plans stay, stay on and we will get this done at some point, so.
Okay, anything else, John?
That's it.
Okay, so um I just want to also um thank the citizens of our area. Not just our citizens, but of our area for passing the school bond um and a jail bond. It says something about our community to know that we want to invest in our kids and our safety and protect our citizens. And I think it was huge. I know it was close, but I think it's huge that it passed. And uh this is another step forward for our area. And so congratulations to them on, on, you know, their efforts to push these bonds. And um everybody have a happy Memorial Day weekend. And remember to, you know, be in memoriam and I'll put it about and enjoy that long weekend. And we will see you guys on Tuesday. I might see you sooner, because I have to come down and sign stuff tomorrow. But uh for the most part, I'll have a nice, long weekend, everybody. So with that, I'm going to adjourn.
Well, stay healthy too.
Yep. All right, we are adjourned.